I'd like to call this special meeting of the Lakewood City Council for Thursday, December 5th, 2019 to order and convene a joint council meeting with our legislative partners from the 28th and 29th District. We'd like to thank you very much for being here tonight. We know your time is very valuable. It's pretty special when we can get four of you in one room. We know that's not going to be able to take place for a few months. So, thank you again for being here. And I'd like to turn the floor over to Ms. Sherri Helder, who's from Gordon Thomas Governmental Affairs and is our contract lobbyist to take us through the Lakewood legislative agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And again, I'll just echo the comments. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time to get together this evening. This is a little bit of a Lakewood tradition. Every year, we meet with the city council and the legislative delegation to go over the city's priorities for the upcoming legislative session. So, as a reminder, the city council adopts two documents related to their legislative policies. The first is a legislative agenda, and that's the first document in the packet in front of you. That document outlines the city's top legislative priorities for the upcoming session. The second document is what's referred to as a policy manual, and that is an overview of the city's position on various policies that have either come up in past legislative sessions or are issues the council has a position on and we anticipate will come up in the future. So, that's included in the packet for you this evening to be a resource. We don't plan on going over that item by item, but we will touch on each of the top legislative priorities on the front page. So, the first item on the legislative agenda is referred to as Lakewood Landing, and this is a priority that's been on the city's agenda for several years. And actually, Brianna Murray, colleague at Gordon Thomas Honeywell, really wanted to be here for this portion of the conversation, but she's running a little bit late. So, I am going to jump down to the second item on the list, and we will come back to the top of the page when she joins us. So, this item, as it says in the title, is related to transportation. And I'll just begin by saying, we recognize that transportation revenues, the state transportation budget, is constrained and is likely to be a difficult topic for the 2020 legislature. But that being said, this item remains a city priority. It was on the city's legislative agenda last session. And based on some of the feedback we received last session, as well as conversations we've been having with various agencies over the last several months, we've made some changes and have the item before you. And what this is, is a $250,000 request to do a multimodal connectivity study. What it is, is it's acknowledging that the state is allocating $495 million to investments along I-5 to address congestion through the JBLM corridor and to put in grade-separated crossings. We want to make sure that we're maximizing that investment. Not only that investment, but the current sounder station off of Bridgeport, as well as the proposed sound transit stations in Tillikum and DuPont. And so, this would be an analysis to determine how to increase passenger rail service throughout that corridor from DuPont through Lakewood. It would be a collaborative study with WashDOT, the city's, JBLM, other relevant agencies, and ultimately would result in a recommendation of whether it makes sense for Amtrak to have a stop in Lakewood, Tillikum, DuPont area. As I mentioned, last year, this was a priority as well. Last year, the amount was $500,000 in working through with the agency, how to advance this project or this priority. Received the recommendation that a $250,000 request would be able to get the work done. And so, that's the amount that you see before you tonight.
And Shelley, I note on this that this blends into a safety issue for Lakewood in addition to being a pure transportation issue. If the Amtrak train slows down to provide transportation here, it's safer through the corridor. And you might have seen just yesterday's Sound Transit's internal investigation indicated that they had very serious safety problems that had not been addressed, and they are delaying allowing Amtrak back on until those safety concerns can be addressed. So, it's a public safety issue in addition to a pure transportation issue for our city.
What do you mention a station there? Is that your desire to see whether a station should be placed here for Amtrak?
That would be part of it, and there are many options. JBLM has supported that. And somewhere between, it makes sense to us for somewhere between the current Lakewood sounder station, maybe even at that location, and DuPont to have an Amtrak stop.
It seems like, you know, what I keep thinking is that, you know, we've got the city, JBLM, more people there have possibly, this city, right?
Well, thirty--
I mean, we have almost 100,000 people going in and out of JBLM.
Yeah, fifty, over 50,000 work there every day, 35,000 sleep there.
So, how do we accommodate what is going to be an ongoing density issue out there at the base with the station in Lakewood? I mean, I argued with the Sound Transit people about this when they brought me a map that showed all the places they're going to place a station, but not anything at JBLM.
Well, if you--
I just, I say that, you guys are all part of the military thing, I know. So, I mean, it just seems to me that we have an ongoing population problem out at JBLM, and I'm trying to figure out how to accommodate that. I mean, that seems to be a major, I would say, a major need to accommodate that population. It actually needs probably more to get to the airport than any group in our city. I'm just open-ended question here. I'm just asking how this plan fits with the needs out there at JBLM.
Part of this, it's an intermodal integration issue, and that would directly address the issue you were talking about, Senator. In fact, one of the possibilities is a station in Tillikum, which is directly across the freeway from the McCord Gate, I mean, the Madigan Gate. So, that would serve both Lakewood and the base at the same time. So, we don't know what the outcome would be, but until you do the study, you can't plan for the future, so.
Should we plan on that as part of the study?
Yes. Yeah. Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, I think the thing that I would add, although taking a look at Amtrak is a catalyst for the thought behind this, that it's, the study could look at more than just passenger rail, because passenger rail infrastructure, even if the study determines it's advisable, is years in the creation in funding. And so, that extending express bus service and bus service out further south along that would also be an area that the study would look at, even if that's looked at as an interim measure until actual stations for sounder extension and/or an Amtrak station could be created. So, I think the study is a bit broader than, as Ms. Helder said, our earlier ask of $500,000 to look at something more narrow. And I really think that the impact includes, you know, the city, JBLM, but it also is impactful to Tillikum and DuPont, and I think the unincorporated areas just east of us, that this would be the more convenient location to access some things like Amtrak and such than the existing infrastructure.
Yeah. And to Mr. Branstadter's point, I sit on the Pierce Transit Board, and we're embarking on our first Bus Rapid Transit project, which is Route 1, basically, out from the downtown Tacoma, Tacoma Dome area, through Parkland, Spanaway, out past Arroyo, right roughly to Walmart. And sketched in is BRT Route 2, which would be down South Tacoma Way, PAC Highway. And it kind of ends out here in the tentative planning, and they don't really know what to do or how to integrate that with the needs of the base in this corridor, and how to link that up would be a potential area of inquiry on this, too.
Didn't the Transit project include funding for 1 and 2, right?
I--
I think it--
Something. Something, yeah.
Rapid Transit, 1 and 2.
So, Mayor Anderson, you mentioned that this is also supported by Sound Transit, JBLM, et cetera. I don't see DuPont on that list. Thank you.
No, but at the bottom sentence, this is supported by Sound Transit, JBLM, Doug Richardson, blah, 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 blah. But I don't see DuPont. Is the city of DuPont also requesting this? I haven't seen that in their request legislation at this point, and so I'm curious if you've coordinated with them.
Informally, I've talked to them, and they're very interested in getting the sounder extended down to DuPont. You know, they're inside the Transit District for Sound Transit, but they get an express bus out of a parking lot that's right next to the rail line there. So, they're interested in having the Sound Transit route extended down for the sounder.
I might add that we had a lot of conversation. The 29th District, of course, has partners, but we also have Spanaway and all the transportation problems that are directed out there in South Pierce County. And I don't know what will happen here, but, you know, there's a conversation rolling around in that group about trying to do this cross-base highway. And I always say that, you know, narrowing it to just where I assume here is the area immediately around I-5, we don't get into those transportation issues that are really part of all of South Pierce County. I mean, the problem with that transportation figure, you know, what do we do? Do we plan for a cross-base highway here, or do we not plan for a cross-base highway? And the groups that are meeting over there on the other side of the freeway are talking about the cross-base highway. And I don't mind this. I mean, it's good to plan for transportation. We need to do that, so just letting you know.
Yeah. I think Representative Morgan wants to speak, then I'll add something.
Thank you. To Senator Conway's point, so it takes care of the west of our district, correct? But when we're talking about the BRT, I was wondering, when you did a study about approving that, was that more about people who had cars that could get to Pacific that would utilize the BRT-1 and then coming in using the sounder, or were people who don't have any cars to get to Pacific since there's no buses coming in from the west or the east to get to Pacific to get on the 1?
It's designed as a spine. People have, generally, you figure access from a half-mile each side. I know that's inconvenient for many people, but the shorter, the more frequently-used path is from a quarter-mile in from that line. That's already Pierce Transit's most utilized line. That's one of the reasons it was chosen. It didn't require a lot of ride-away, but it's the highest utilized. It isn't contemplated that there will be people driving and creating parking lots. It's anticipated that it would, over time, have transit-oriented development. It makes that corridor more attractive to develop. It's within Pierce County's urban growth area, and so that people wouldn't have to have cars.
So, you're intent to look at the cross-base highway here?
Not me.
I ask that because you have partners, Spanaway, in your list here. And I'm just telling you, we go to meetings over there. You know, we don't have cities over there, but we do have a lot of communities. The biggest change need is trying to figure out a way to get away from the roadblock on 512.
Actually, I use my old cross-base highway from Military Road on Perimeter Road and come out in Woodbrook.
I would try to find that someday.
It works.
I'm just warning you that, you know, we get into this study and then get into the cross-base highway issue.
Yeah.
And, you know, does there need to be a cross-base highway?
I will, I will tell you one thing that has changed since that was originally explored is that we went through an extensive study on a land swap for the Clear Zone. And when we examined the land that JBLM said may be available, it was over 100 acres along that pathway, and it was environmentally disqualified from being utilized for virtually anything. Between the critters, the water, and the oak trees, it was virtually valueless as developable property. So, anything that went through there would have substantial environmental problems that weren't disclosed first time around. So, that's the only information I really have.
So, I want to make sure we keep moving so we're able to get through all the items on the agenda.
Can I ask, that's a question, actually, that's related to the study. If the study comes back and it's positive, and there's all these good reasons for a stop in Lakewood, what would be then the next steps in actually getting that approved?
So, part of the study would look at when in the future. We know that there's going to be a future, obviously, the grade-separated crossings aren't completed yet, and the stations in Tillikum and DuPont aren't completed yet. So, part of it would need to determine when in the future would be an appropriate time. And then, the next step would be to go through the approval process with Amtrak, with WashDOT and ODOT, in terms of making sure that another stop is appropriate for that line.
Those are just those two agencies?
WashDOT and ODOT would be the approving agencies, along with Amtrak would be part of that as well. Okay. So, I think we'll jump up to the top item on the agenda, since Brianna has joined us, and I will turn it over to her.
Good evening, and my apologies for being late. We need more transportation options along I-5. I did not come from Parkland, but I came, yeah, yeah. So, the next item that we want to discuss is really the city's largest legislative ask this upcoming session, and it's an item that we have talked to many of you about several times before. I think you're familiar with the Lakewood Landing site. It's a 25-acre site that is along I-5, so it's I-5 frontage, and it's at the junction of I-5 and 512. It's one of the few areas along I-5 where you've got a major state route connecting with I-5 that remains undeveloped. And it is a prime opportunity to redevelop and generate not only an increased quality of life right near JBLM, but also an increase in revenue at the state and local level. So, if redeveloped, there would be an increase in sales and property taxes generated from that site, and really presents a great opportunity. We also see an opportunity for the type of, whether it's, and it's yet to be determined, but whether it's affordable housing or retail or other types of services that could go at that site, so that there are places closer to JBLM and closer to Lakewood, so that there's really, you know, an opportunity for people to live closer to where they work. The biggest challenge to redeveloping the site is a DOT maintenance facility that is currently located there. And I think many of you are familiar that we have been working with DOT over the last, probably three years, three years now. We entered into, the city entered into a memorandum of understanding with DOT to move forward with the redevelopment and to look at different options on what to do with the DOT site. The city has identified a broker that they're working with to contact the property owners that are, in addition to DOT, that own property along that 25-acre span, and are looking at how best to market it to potential developers. As part of our conversations with DOT, they have indicated a willingness to move their maintenance facility. They recognize the redevelopment opportunity that is there. However, they've made it very clear that in order for them to move, a new maintenance facility needs to be sited and constructed for them as part of redevelopment on the site. The cost of siding and building a DOT maintenance facility then becomes part of the cost of redeveloping the site and makes it significantly harder to find a developer willing to take on that risk and do that development, and really makes it not a profitable project. And from the DOT perspective, at the end of the day, they get a brand-new maintenance facility out of all of this with zero cost to them. So, we've been looking at different paths forward to try and close that, what is essentially a funding gap, to making it a profitable site to redevelop. And one of the tools that we're looking at is a program that the state started in the early 2000s called the Local Revitalization Financing Program. And it's a program that provides a credit against the state sales tax to jurisdictions to-- to make infrastructure investments to help make sites more appealing to developers and to help spur sites into redevelopment. That program was defunded during the Great Recession because there was not adequate state funding to continue to issue awards under that program. However, there were several rounds of awards issued prior to that. And most of those rewards have been monitored and there's a report that's issued through the Department of Revenue and they show a significant return on investment. So the state has made these investments in the early 2000s in other communities to help sites like the Lakewood Landing site redevelop and really seen the benefit through an increase in the sales and property tax collections on those sites. We would like to, now that we're in better economic times, to reopen that program and make another round of investments. The Association of Washington Cities shares that objective and is going to be bringing forward legislation that reinvigorates the program as a whole. And we've done our fiscal analysis on the property and one of the things that we've determined is that in order to close the funding gap that is generated by having to site and construct a new maintenance facility, the city would need to receive a credit against the state sales tax of, so an award, a LRF award of $2 million a year. And then the awards last for 20 years. So we know that this legislation is being brought forward and our, our very large ask, and we recognize that it's a large ask of all of you, is to help us ensure that that legislation include an award of $2 million a year for 20 years for, for the Lakewood Landing site. There's, I guess, yeah, I'll pause there.
There's much more we can share.
When you were talking about this proposal for, you told me the land swap. And that you were looking at getting some land swapped around here. And that sounded more doable to me because, you know, the state gave some more land where they can put in maintenance because they'll be better. And I didn't really think about that.
Sure. Great question. And so we, we have looked at a lot of different options on how to try and make this happen. We have identified alternative sites that are near the current one that DOT is amenable to. Those sites are in public ownership, but there would need to be some sort of transfer of funds. The other thing that we have, I publicly, based on the line, who owns the line there? It's the, WashDOT owns it, but they're not sure what restrictions exist on it and the school district, yeah. And the other component is that anytime there is a sale of DOT property, so when the, the sale of the DOT property on the 25 acre Lakewood Landing site occurs, the proceeds of that sale are right now, without legislative direction, required to be deposited into the motor vehicle fund. There is no way to use the proceeds from the sale of that, of that property to help relocate the new, relocate and construct the new facility. So there are some other options and paths forward that we can look at to try and help close this cost delta. And, and we'll be coming to you with some of those legislative requests coming forward. But the, that still isn't going to close the big sort of redevelopment costs that are needed for the construction of a whole nother facility. So even if you, I guess, I guess another way of, a shorter way of answering your question is even if you did the land swap, you still have to construct a maintenance facility. And it's the construction of the facility that becomes costly.
It seemed like that WashDOT was interested in this because they wanted to have more effect.
Right, they are.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's a real critical piece of land for them too, I imagine.
Right.
It's sitting there on the intersection of I five.
They're very willing partners. They're, they're, what they've communicated to us is that DOT has a lot of priorities. Their priorities as an agency focus on highway improvements more so than on improvements to their maintenance facility. And so if we're going to advance this forward, it's not going to be the agency's top priority and it's not going to be something that they're going to choose to allocate a lot of funds to.
Another question I have is a transportation budget issue, right?
No, no, so the local revitalization financing award is, is an operating budget impact.
So Senator, one of the things that come, in, in addition to what Ms. Murray has mentioned about the inability presently to allocate the proceeds to the project when they sell the land, the fiscal note on this will be a lot bigger than what actually may be a net positive to the state from this. Because if you take this out of public ownership, it's underutilized property. It goes back on the tax rolls. There's, you know, sales tax, there's real property tax, there's B and O tax. And it, it appears from back of the envelope calculations that a reasonable development will generate a lot, the state's share of those taxes will be more than is necessary to pay for this. But the fiscal note's going to be, oh, got to dole the money out now and, and there's no credit for the land or all the taxes that are going to come in.
You know, it's called dynamic fiscal.
Yeah, well, that's.
A way of looking at future, how this generates additional dollars for the dental fund rather than just looking at its.
Well, this is one of those.
I think Representative Levitt's had a question for a while now.
Representative Levitt?
Thank you, and, and thanks for the, the explanation of this and, and the clarification of where the dollars are going to come from. So a couple of things, you're asking for 20 million in essence, right? Two million times 10.
It's a 20 year credit.
A 20 year, so $40 million. And that the, the, WashDOT would get a new facility for free, but not really because they already own the land. So it's not, they're not getting it, they're not getting additional things because they would be giving the land over through the state, correct? So it's, in essence, it's, WashDOT isn't getting something for free. They're giving, they're giving $40 million through the state for.
Sure, it wouldn't be coming out of the DOT budget. But if you think about DOT as the state.
Yeah, yeah. And so what is Lakewood putting in? So you're asking for the state for 2 million annually for a 20 year period. What is the city of Lakewood putting in for the development of whatever it might get for Lakewood Landing? And then the, the second question is, it said the site could potentially include affordable housing, childcare centers. And what's the, the opportunity to know that affordable housing, childcare centers, et cetera, would occur versus retail centers, private development, et cetera? Which also is important and it adds to the tax base and it adds to the city economic stability and other opportunities for there. So where, where's the guarantee that if we put in the 40 million from the state and advocate for that, that it could potentially is a very kind of amorphous kind of statement? It could maybe someday perhaps kind of, you know, I mean, the, the language isn't tight, if I may. And so I'm just, what, so two questions. What is Lakewood putting in and how can we guarantee that some of the kinds of projects that happen in Lakewood Landing would actually be affordable housing, childcare centers, et cetera? Because we hear, and I, and I guess I'm reeling from a hearing that I attended this, this, this morning on the Senate Military, Joint Military, Senate and House Joint Military and Veterans Affairs Committees. And the two primary items that they talked about for military spouses are affordable housing and childcare centers. And here we are in this close proximity, so how could we might, could we might, to hear this kind of language, how might we ensure that, that that population which lives in Lakewood has those opportunities as well that you partner together?
Right. So your first question is what is Lakewood putting forward? And as part of doing the fiscal analysis on this site, the cities have their consultant go through and look at all of the different, different opportunities that are available to the city as far as utilizing a lot of the local tools or grant programs, things along those lines. And so we would envision utilizing as many of those as possible. I think the exact dollar amount is, you know, to be determined at this point, which also speaks to the, the second one. Right now, where we're at in the process, there's, so we've identified a broker to put together an agreement amongst the property owners to then go out and see from the development community what level of interest is there in what components of a project to try and make something happen. So it's hard to make a commitment around this is specifically what will be at that site until that level of analysis occurs.
Thank you.
I think there, I mean, I think if you're looking for incentives or ways of encouraging or getting a particular outcome on that site, we can look at that as part of our discussion on how the legislature weighs in on this site. Anytime you add affordable housing or, well, and I guess, maybe that's too broad of a statement. Not anytime you add, but one of, it, it all impacts the overall profitability of the site, right? So if you, if you put in additional, like, we want to, we want the X, Y, and Z to be on this site, then we need to build that into the fiscal analysis of it overall and we can have a lot more of that dialogue.
Thank you.
Mr. Branson?
I, I, I think, you know, that, that is also a question that we have asked ourselves, not just on the 25 acres, but on the, the broader area that redevelopment of this site would also be a catalyst to develop. And so we are moving forward with developing a subarea plan that includes this 25 acres, but also the acres around it to determine what would we like to, to be there? How do we incentivize to be able to do that and, and to move forward? Similar to what we had done over the past few years to create a subarea plan for our downtown. And that helps us both with making sure that we have the incentives for the, the mix of uses that we want to see on the 25 acres and in the adjacent acres that would, would actually then become this, this area of doing it. So we're, we're working on the answer to, 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 to your question. And we, we have some funding to, and, and a timeline so to begin to actually do a subarea plan of that area and, and come, and come up with that. You know, what we're really asking though is to concurrently work on the big piece that, that, that deals with, once we know what we want to go down there and we have the incentives, you know, you know, then, then let's have the mechanism to help WashDOT. And when we, $2 million for a year for 20 years, again, this is, most of that money, a significant portion of that money would actually not be spent on the city of Lakewood, it would be spent on WashDOT.
Senator Biden?
Just a kind of question about the sequencing here. So is, does the, you, you, I want the approval of the funding this, this session, but you won't know until your developer goes and engages the property owners and whether you can put together a viable deal that they can all buy into and, and throw their investment, their properties into. So if that should fall through, in other words, sort of worst case scenario, how does that, how would that work?
Sure. Oh, thank you. So I think that a couple of things. Once the legislature approves a new investment in the program, that doesn't, the, the way the program functions is that the city decides, one, that they have to create the revitalization area. So the city would have to go through the process of adopting an ordinance establishing that revitalization area. They spend a year collecting base level finance data, which kind of shows the baseline of sales and property tax within that revitalizer, revitalization area. And then as, and then the award really wouldn't come until the subsequent year.
Who, who makes the award then?
The award goes through, currently the way the program is drafted is it goes through the Department of Revenue. And it's, it's a credit against the state sales tax, but if nothing happens on the site, the city doesn't get the credit against the state sales tax. The credit against the state sales tax is up to $2 million, but the city has to demonstrate that there's an increase in sales and property tax collections within the revitalization area. So if, if the state makes the award and nothing happens, no state money gets spent.
It's conditioned on the word.
It is. It's conditioned on the city really doing its part to increase the sales and property tax revenues within that revitalization area. And anytime the city is able to increase the sales and property tax revenues within an area, the state substantially benefits from that since the state collects a larger percentage of sales and property tax revenue than the city.
All right. So you mentioned the Association of Washington Cities is supporting this. Are there other cities then that are also coming with their projects? And do you have it well distributed around the state?
So I think the bill, and we have not seen the, the draft language that we hope exists through the association. But our understanding is the bill will be drafted to not include specific awards. And it will be originally drafted to be a list of criteria and either, I, I think there was some debate about whether it's a program that would be administered through Department of Commerce or Department of Revenue. We believe, sort of based on our conversations through the association, that this will be a unique site because, one, the money needs to go toward the construction of a DOT facility, not toward infrastructure, which is the traditional expenditure and the traditional obstacle to sites being redeveloped. So we think we're going to need to have that element. And then the current statute caps the awards at 500,000 a year for 20 years. And in order to build this DOT facility, we obviously need a lot more than that. So Lakewood's needs probably exceed beyond what the competitive pool and competitive criteria are that the association is developing. And we want to sort of build in a component that's specific for the site.
Excuse me. Yes. I'm just trying to picture exactly where this 25 acres is at. Is that along, is that up the street from where the sounder location is? Is it along that street there?
It's, it's, you know, you come off five twelve from Parkland and you turn south and off to your right, there's a lumberyard.
Yes, gotcha then.
And on the other side, on Pack Highway, there's an old Costco and.
Oh, you mean Grocery Outlet, Discount World?
Grocery Outlet, a box and a huge parking lot. That's the underutilized portion that's in private ownership. Between those buildings and the railroad cross, where the railroad crosses the freeway is the area that's owned by WashDOT.
Okay.
And you can see part of it from the freeway, but more of it is, is back.
And the 25 acres includes more than just the DOT site.
Correct.
So we're more to the east?
We are to, we are on the west side of south, of, of I five. So if you're southbound on I five, it's on your right.
I'm wondering about displacement of businesses that are over there currently. And then if you're talking about going to the west, I do believe that there's housing back there, right?
Very, there's very little housing. It's, this would be voluntary for the owners of the property. And they've expressed interest in the past in getting together and developing it. The hangup has been, it's not large enough for, we've been told by knowledgeable developers that it's not large enough for redevelopment unless this WashDOT property is included. That in order to do something that's economically viable, we've even looked at what happens if we move the street over, trying to make it big enough.
And I understand that, Mr. Anderson, about the WashDOT issue here, but I'm really looking at the displacement of those businesses in that area. And what happens if, I agree today, but as a property owner, I don't agree tomorrow? Are we going to be talking about eminent domain? I mean, what's the contingency plan?
Under Washington law, we can't use eminent domain to buy property to use for private development. That's clearly banned under Washington state law, so you can't do that.
One more question. I think the proposed land to put WashDOT, to exchange with WashDOT, you said that that was school district property? that was school district property?
One of the sites, one of, I think, one of the sites that's been considered is Clover Park School District, and then another site is Wash Dot-owned land, and then some of the other land is privately owned. I don't know if the school district land is still part of the discussion.
Yeah, interested to know where the school board stands in giving up land that's very in need for public education.
They've surplused it.
Right. They wouldn't, they would, it would have to be purchased.
Yeah. They, this is land that's near the Wood, the current Woodbrook Middle School that they've sold, and it's land that's not used for school purposes at this time, and it's too small for a school. It's like, there's a five acre, five acre piece, or a couple of five acre pieces in there, that are kind of vestiges of ownership in the past, and they've surplused it for sale.
I just, I just need to know the name of the tax bill that the cities are bringing forward, you know, what's really calling it?
So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a local revitalization financing bill. The other...
Local revitalization?
Local revitalization financing. The, the association is also going to be working on a bill that would authorize what's called true tax increment financing. It requires a constitutional amendment. That would be an, also a, a tool that would help with this site. Again, we don't know the specific language on that bill, and it's not quite as, sort of perfectly on point as the local revitalization financing piece, but if that's the program that advances forward, we could potentially be looking at inserting something along the lines of this into that other bill as well.
Representative Levitt.
Thank you. And I, I will say that LRFPs are great programs, I'm a big advocate of them, and I think that they are another tool for cities to be able to expand the work, the great work that they're doing, and so whether it fits this project or not, in a, in our upcoming session with the challenges we have for a lot of different reasons, may or may not occur, but I think that expanding and, and opening up access to that program again is a very good thing, so I'm glad that they're bringing it forward.
So, in the interest of time, let's move on to some of our continuing efforts to expand park opportunities for under, sort of, parts of our population.
So, moving down the agenda, is our capital budget request on the horizon. So we recognize that this upcoming session is the second year of the biennium, and therefore the supplemental budget year, and also that you all were really instrumental in helping the city receive awards from Department of Commerce for just over $1 million for turf in fields at Fort Stilicon Park, and $773,000 for restoration and expansion of Spring Brook Park. So we are very grateful for those awards and are putting them to work. We did want to, however, make sure that you were aware of the plans that the city has on the horizon to continue improving parks throughout city of Lakewood. In the 28th District, we're continuing the theme of improvements at Fort Stilicon Park, and the, the next round of improvements would be lighting at the ballfields to further expand their use and competitiveness for tournaments. The, the four ballfields, the proposal right now is to have lights at all four fields, which would be two, estimated to be about $2.9 million, which is a fairly hefty price tag. They can be broken into smaller chunks through...
Turn on car lights.
If the opportunity is for a smaller amount, in, if there is an opportunity for a smaller amount in the supplemental year, the, a single project, or a single ballfield would be $750,000. The second project is expansion of Ward's Lake Park, which is in the 29th District, and this is in the northeast corner of the city. Right now, the park is 26 acres, and it's been, the city's been slowly acquiring these parcels over a number of years, and is currently in the process of acquiring another 11 acres. It's also in the process of developing a site master plan for the park to determine what types of improvements would occur there. So there's no specific dollar amount right now attached to the Ward's Lake Park, but some of the improvements that are being considered as part of the master plan are trail expansion to make a, a one-mile loop around the lake, improved water access, possibly for fishing or canoeing, some wetland enhancements, additional parking, other components to increase safety in that area. And I think with that, I will pause and see if there are any questions about either of those two projects.
I was confused where this is and where it's like, you say Senate, Mexico Cinema, which one?
The Regal Cinema off of...
Right off 84th.
Yep.
It's, it's behind the furniture store.
Okay, gotcha.
You come in off 84th, or there's a back way.
Right, or the, the water. I didn't know there was a light back there.
It's, the water from, the water from I-5 has to go somewhere.
Yeah.
I've got a question, and, and I think the city of Lakewood, you know, for, for, I'm a huge fan of parks for all kinds of reasons. I think outdoor recreation builds healthy families, healthy communities, it gets people out, I mean, it's a really good, good project, and, and I look at Mary, I'm a huge fan of her and the work that she's doing. I had an opportunity, so I'm going to put the city of Lakewood on the spot for a second, I had the opportunity to visit one of our parks this past session that we were able to find, and I learned that the rowing club has a contract that pays a dollar or something per year. And so I got very interested in that contract and what that might look like, and I, and, you know, when we look at, in a short session, when we look at tight funding, trying to figure out what 976 is going to mean ripple effect across the budget, for 725,000 for lights on a ballfield, where are we, is there a huge demand for lights at night to play sports? I don't think there is. I have kids who play sports, I don't know if there's a massive demand saying, we need lights and therefore... So my question is, has the city taken a look at that rowing club contract and what it might generate? And I know that its grandfather did, and I know the history, I've, I've learned that, and I've asked for a copy of the contract recently to get, to take a look at it.
You hit, you hit the nail on the head.
Exactly. It just, I just, I'm just saying, from a state representative perspective, when you're giving away a beaut, this beautiful property in a, in a community that is suffering, truly suffering in Stilicon, and you have this nice facility, this beautiful waterfront area, it's really hard to swallow a request for 725,000 for lights that I'm not convinced there is a demand for. I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm not arguing with it, I'm just asking the question.
No, I just, I just want to clarify.
And I, and I want to thank, you know, the tour, the great tour of our, our park director and others, but when I learned that, it's been, it's been a formal request from my legislative assistant to the city recently, yeah.
That was, Harry Todd Part in Stilicon was a county park. County parks are generally turned over to the city at incorporation. In 1996, right before the turnover, the county signed a long-term lease for a dollar a year with the rowing club on the condition that they build that facility there. And then they turned the property over to the city of Lakewood. And it was, so it's, it's, it's stuck like on a 50-year lease, and we can't really do anything about it. In addition, if we had a park master plan, if somebody actually planned that, that wouldn't be where the building is. So we have to work around it. There, they have a property right there that we can't do anything about. They run a good program, I mean, but, but it's, it, it, but...
I saw H. Bar and Restoration, so I had an opportunity to review your 12-page request in the city, and I saw our council member Moss a couple nights ago at an event, and I said, 12 pages, huh? I said, you're getting a good contract with GTH for, for that kind of thing, and, and so I've read through all of these in advance of this, and there are a lot of great projects, one of which, in my mind, I think benefits the community, and it has to do with playground equipment. You know, playground equipment for kids and families, that's huge, that's important, that matters. Lights, when we have a contract for a dollar a year for a rowing club that it could afford perhaps to pay just a little bit more, is really hard to swallow. So when I saw this list, I'm not suggesting I don't support the list and won't support it, so please don't take my comments for anything other than that, it's just hard to kind of weigh the importance of the other projects in this 12-page, Pat, this was my personal printout, this 12-page packet that I went through in detail, when you're asking for 725,000 for lights, that I'm not convinced has been an outcry of community requests. That's all I'm asking.
I would, I would defer to Ms. Dodsworth, someday she can, she can fill you in on how the synergies with those lights work. It, 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 it's much greater impact than it would appear, but I, I agree with you. On its, on its face, that's a lot of money for one set of lights. And I practice football and, with headlights on at a new school, so, you know, you, you, I'm not suggesting we, uh, put Christmas lights out there, but we, we do need something. And I would note that we're a bit unique in that we incorporated in 1996, and we were underserved, and, for example, Spring Brook Park didn't really, it didn't exist, and we've coupled things together with community partners in the legislature and, and kept building. It's really important to us, it's one of my personal priorities, that every year we add something to our parks. I, I was a Parks and Rec kid when I, I was a kid, it was, it kept me out of trouble. And so I, I see great value to the common access to things for free, especially when we're becoming more and more organized and more and more dense. So inside a Nerman area, trying to expand parks is a, is a really heavy lift, and, and we need the legislature's help on that.
I think Representative Morgan has a question.
I'm going to have to echo my colleague, Representative Levitt. Truly, parks are important. Parkland doesn't have a park, so we could use a park as well, I understand that. But the reality is, we have a couple of crises going on in our state. We have a very big homeless problem, we have a very big opioid problem, we have a very big behavioral health problem, so these are the things that the state is really looking at, at this time. Out of all of these documents that I have looked at tonight, I have only seen one document where it says it could be, as my colleague said, about some affordable housing. So, being that I know a lot of this area out here, especially around Spring Brook, Woodbrook has a lot of substandard housing now. Matter of fact, I had a friend, matter of fact, one of your constituents, had to move out of their house because it's overrun, run with roaches, and he's on disability, and on a disability payment of $1,000 a month, so where does he go? Right? So, but I don't see anything in here in these priorities that say that along with these parks that we're providing for children and families and seniors and dogs, do I see any low-income housing going up around there to support those very kids that you got to enjoy when you were growing up?
So, you, you make a great point, how, and I have a long answer for you. The, the first is, cities, municipalities, core competency isn't being social service providers, and we don't have the, the capability to build anything meaningful. So, a city of 60,000 doesn't have a housing authority. A city of 60,000 doesn't have social service agencies. Under our, under our state, under our state, both funding and statutory setup, those are the responsibilities generally of others besides the city.
I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson, you do have a housing authority, it's Pierce County Housing Authority that services this area.
I said, we don't, as a city, we don't have a housing authority. So, we aren't asking money for money for something we, we don't have. That's, you're, you're right, that's, that's the responsibility in many ways of the Pierce County Housing Authority, which is a separate legal entity. Now, one thing that my colleagues on the council don't know, really, haven't been brought up to speed with, because this has only happened in, I guess, congealed in the last 48 hours, for the last number of months, the, the mayors of Pierce County, approximately 10 of us, and the county executive, have met as a group, working collaboratively with respect to affordable housing. Just a heads up to you as legislators, you can expect maybe as many as a dozen mayors and the county exec to come down to you to ask for study money, or perhaps even a, a type of pilot project in Pierce County, where we work collectively, where we can have enough synergy to actually do something meaningful as a group rather than do it fractionalize. We recognize that this is a very important problem. We also recognize that until we inventory our various assets and, and our various options, we can't really do anything collectively. So we're, we're chipping in money, we're hiring a consultant, we are inventorying things, and we're going to be on your doorstep this legislative session as a group, trying to bring the Pierce County legislators together as a group, together with the Pierce County mayors and county executives, showing some unity that doesn't exist other places, to move forward with an affordable housing coalition. So, we're working on it collectively.
Do you, do you use the, 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 the program, ten-year, do you use that for housing development?
It's available. Yes. Yeah.
So you, you, you have access to the same, the, you know, I've been a little bit concerned about the program not setting aside enough units there for affordable housing. I, I'm sorry, I, you know, when we passed that bill years ago, or there, the whole logic of passing that for the cities was to also ensure that we had a segment of affordable housing in those, in those units, and, you know, I, I'll be honest, if I, if I see any, I'll introduce legislation to require it, if the cities aren't going to, you know, introduce, you know, try to make part of those, those housing projects affordable to people, I mean, that was the whole idea behind it. And I don't know how, I, I don't disagree with your idea of bringing everyone together, but...
Well, one of the things, one of the things is, yeah, one of the things is...
Not using the current legislation to address...
In this, in the hot housing market, we've found collectively as, as cities, and I say this for the group, that unfortunately, there doesn't seem to be any market-based movement to take advantage of that. The only, the affordable housing that has been constructed in Pierce County recently has all been mission-driven, and, and not the private enterprise base. And so it isn't, in this market, it doesn't seem to be enough of an incentive to make a difference.
I just noticed that the council went ahead with two projects, and there wasn't a bit of it set aside for affordable housing, and instead we're building many houses down there around their park. I mean, I mean, we've got to be smart, we've got to be smart about this, and really use these housing developments, even if the developers don't want to do it, because, you know, they don't see the, it doesn't work out for their mind, we still need to address, if we're going to use tax exemption authority there, and, 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 you know, the 15-year deferral of taxes, we should get something from that to address the housing crisis. I'm, I'm preaching a lot.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's a couple of things I, I want to mention. The 1406 money is out there, and, and thank all of you for the, the passage of that. We've expressed our intent under, under the, under the law, we did express our intent as a city council to look at going it alone, but I would note that it's about $90,000, $92,000 a year. I don't know that, I, I haven't looked for any recent, if the DOR has come out with that, but it's not a whole heck of a lot of money. So we're still leaving open the option of working with the county. of working with the county and whatnot on, on building some affordable housing, because under the law, we can't bond that, so that's one of the things that we're looking at. The, the other thing that I would say is, under, so, we have a rental safety program, and it, you know, is in its early stages, it's been in place for about a year and a half, I mean, the actual inspections have been occurring since, I think, April of 18, so things still get biased, or, or they're not, they're on a five-year turn, so, I mean, there's gonna be some rental properties that are not gonna get looked at for, you know, until 2022. Under state law, we could do it every three years, but we chose to do it every five years. There was, there was some resistance by the landlord community on that, and that gets to the point that a lot of our housing is older housing, 60% of our housing is low-income housing already. So, a lot of when we, when we talk about parks, is to deliver into neighborhoods, as well as using CDBG money to make transportation improvements and, and put in streetlights into these neighborhoods that are already poor, and that the, the policy of this council has been that these, these neighborhoods deserve what other neighborhoods and other communities would have, which would be parks and, and recreational opportunities, and, and good streets and streetlights and whatnot. So, it's not a, it's not a, a hostility towards, to, towards low-income housing, but it is, it is that the low-income housing is already here. There's a lot of other communities in our, in our, in our county, and in our, in our, in Western Washington that I could argue are not doing their fair share, so, you know. We have, we have the lowest rent, lowest rent.
If I could respond to something that he mentioned about the rental inspection program, were you saying that to me to say that we are, you know, the City of Lakewood is addressing those kind of issues, and this renter has to wait until you can get around to his property to inspect it?
No.
No.
No, in fact, renters, renters have, renters have rights to complain and to have a habitable unit, whi, which they don't, and we've-
They did.
Well, well, which many times they don't for a variety of reasons, they're, they're scared to come forward, and so, when we know of it, we act to the extent the city has authority. One of the things that we found was that you can inspect from the outside, the city doesn't normally have the right to go to, into the inside. We were finding in instances, for example, when we, when fire police made a call, we would find life safety issues inside the unit, things as bad as exposed wiring, leaking plumbing, sheet rock falling in. So, in order to keep things from becoming substandard housing, or to bring it up and require compliance, we passed really the only rental housing safety program in Pierce County. We also designed it so, unlike Seattle, you know, all based on Seattle, they have one, it's a revenue generator, but they don't really inspect. We took a lot of heat from landlords and moved forward, because the best thing we can do for affordable housing in Lakewood is to preserve the less expensive affordable housing that we have, and keep it from becoming substandard housing, because we're already built out. So, it's a pretty aggressive posture for a city of our size to try to do that, but we have 60% renters versus 40% owners, most cities are the other way around, and so, that, that's addressed, it making sure that they have safe places to live, and it's a priority for us.
So, I'm looking forward to the 20 mayors, I know you didn't say 20, but the many mayors coming down to the Capitol, it's fabulous, and so I expect when you come down, you'll have a list of the contributions from each city that you're making, you said that you're chipping in, so you'll have the amount and the dollars ready to go.
What we're doing is, what we've tentatively agreed is to come back to our councils and ask for, from some initial study money, but in the long run, what we're inventorying is what the assets are, what there are, CDBG money, home money, HUD money, 2060, 2163, 14, whatever it is. Put all of these things together, line up the restrictions. One of the things we've talked to about tentatively is perhaps coming to legislature and on a, on a test basis saying, "Hey, loosen up the restrictions on one or more of these funding sources that are already there, so we can address it to the most effective way to address affordable housing." So, we haven't come up with a plan yet-
Okay.
But we're, the first thing we have to do is get on the same train.
Okay, thank you.
And hope it doesn't go off the track by the time it's done.
You just said chipping in, so I'm like, okay, is Lakewood putting in 20, Tacoma's putting in 50, who's putting in what? So, I'm just making sure that as you come through to ask, 1406 is great, 1590 is a, is a bill, and you talked about tools for the cities, and social safety net programs, 1/10 of 1% for behavioral health, Lakewood has an option to opt into that and has chosen not to as a tool. And 1590 will be coming back, Representative Dolio, or, sorry, not, scratch that, it's not Representative Dolio.
No, it is.
Oh, it is, Representative Dolio has a bill that would allow kind of a similar approach for affordable housing that may or may not get out, we'll see, with amendments. So, just kind of as we think about affordable housing or MFTE reform, because we've heard at the JLRK study that it's not working, and that we spend, you know, two, upwards of 200-something million per year on housing that our auditors are suggesting isn't the greatest program, and it's not providing the yield for affordable housing, or 20% kind of, you know, uptick, and so, as you come, if you could talk about some of those opportunities and some of those tools that cities are being afforded through AWC and, and counties to be able to address some of these problems, that would be helpful as we look at the full picture, particularly at a short session. Thank you.
I just wanna make note that there's a lot of other issues inside your manual here, I appreciate it, you know, that you would, including the money of funding we need to get for the compatibility fund to, to make sure that we can start accessing the money that the Department of Defense set aside for purchasing that, that land next to that airbase, you know, hopefully we'll get that taken care of, that's a small request, I think we can do that, so. I see you have a lot of issues here, and I appreciate the manual, and putting it together, and, and it does have housing here, you know, and, and it does have issues. Well, it, it, it talks about, you know, I think it talks about issues around housing that's important. I mean, we all know we have a housing crisis, we've heard about that, it's like many of those military affairs, the Department of, they did a statewide visit with all those spouses, military families, and, and one of the big issues that came up was the lack of childcare services and the lack of affordable housing.
And one of the, one of the housing issues that Lakewood has, that I've found or shared by many communities, is the, the lack of senior condo housing.
Yeah.
People don't have a way to age in place, you know, sell your house, they still wanna own, they still wanna live in the same community. Sumner doesn't have any, Pialp has some, so the people from Sumner have to, they sell their house, they move to Pialp, but we would like to see that missing piece in our community.
I'm gonna alert you, I think this is gonna, this is gonna be a 60-day session, so just remember that if you have your folks there or legislation, that, you know, 60 days is not, I don't think after the long session last year, there's much interest in having anything but a 60-day session this, this time out in election year, that's the worst sense, so, some of these ideas we may have to be working on. I mean, we all know that, you know, we're in the small, we're in the supplemental budget, can't do much because we're, we don't have the kind of money around that we had with Moss here, and so it's gonna be a year of probably more moderate demands.
We, we under, we understand.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I think you, you took the words out of my mouth, I was just gonna say that we appreciate your, your input and your willingness to continue working with the city, and you know that you will be seeing Brianna and I down in Olympia when we end up there in January, so if you have questions related to the city, city's priorities, or local government in general, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, and I know the council members sitting around this table would extend the same offer.
And we do appreciate your attendance greatly, because it's, it's so much better to talk before the session and know what issues are than it is to show up as a stranger in the middle of the session and wonder why your legislature doesn't do anything for me.
This has been a very effective meeting, actually, as a, you know, it's, it's interesting that the other major city doesn't meet.
It does. We have a meeting next week.
Okay, okay. Not like this, not like this.
So-
This is a, this is a meeting with the city council people and the mayor, and I don't think in my many years down there I've ever had a meeting put together with the mayor of Tacoma and the city council.
Well, thank you very much for coming, we, we value your time and, and have a safe drive home. We're, we're adjourned.
Thank you very much.
And John and I are back in DC with an empty bucket next week.
Okay.